Our AdVorum collections and that's primarily related to the increases in our net assessed valuation. Those have been averaging about, well, about 2% per year. We had a really high year in 2009. This last year it was 1.2%. And we did an estimate of a flat NAV growth of 1.2% for our projections. We do not get the final net assessed valuations until after the start of the school year in August or September. And so we calculate a projection on that NAV growth each year. Our next category of revenue is our state revenue. State revenue for the general fund is budgeted for, I'm sorry, that is still on page 11 for your reference, is budgeted at $178 million, which is about 56% of our total general fund revenue. State revenue has two main categories of income. One is dedicated. And for those categories, that's like gross production tax, motor vehicle collections, and school land funds. Then we have what are called our appropriated state funds, which is like state aid. And that's where we get our other flexible benefit allowance, textbook, and then smaller programs like advanced placement, and IV, and robotics. There's many, many programs within state revenue. State aid is an equity formula. We've talked about on the AdVorum how that's chargeable and reduces the state aid so growth is good, but it does have a direct impact on the state aid. There's 57 variables in the calculation of state aid for each school district. We're projecting an increase in our state revenue of 3.8% or $6.5 million. And that's primarily a result of projected increase in student enrollment for the district next year. With increased student enrollment, there's increased staffing and increased costs associated with staffing such as flexible benefit allowance. So while this does drive increased revenue, the associated costs generally meet or exceed that increased revenue. We've also seen increased staffing costs, as we discussed, related to workers' comp and teacher retirement. Our state aid will receive our initial allocation notice at the end of June. Then primarily, we get one at mid-year and at the end of the year. We still, as of today's date, not received our final allocation for 2013. So as we've discussed before, state aid is a difficult item to get tied down when it's not finalized until the end of the fiscal year. When we're looking at the charts on this page, the top chart is our total state revenue for general fund, graphically represented there. Below that, we isolated just the state aid portion. And for three of the years, you'll see a yellow bar that's for ARA. This ARA money is stabilization money. The intent of this ARA money was to offset the economic decline after 2009. We have other ARA funds that will show up in our federal programs, and those will be represented later. But this ARA money is strictly to offset state funding. So when you compare the bottom chart and take it in relationship to the top, while we see a growth in state revenue overall, when you isolate the state aid, you can see that historically, we're still behind our 2009 run rate. And we've lost the supplemental ARA money associated. Federal revenue, still page six, now in your budget book, please. I'm sorry, I think it's actually page three. We have a federal program summary. And on this report, we've listed the expenditures for all of our federal programs, and then our appropriation budget for last year and this year. On federal programs, the life cycle generally starts out that we receive the allocation notice from the state of what our federal funding will be. And for 2014, we haven't received our allocations, but our projection is $56 million for general fund and $22 million for child nutrition. Once we receive our allocation notices, we go ahead and load a budget plan into each of the school sites for use of the federal programs according to their budget. And then the money is spent and funded initially out of our local county and state funds. As the box indicates on the right, we then file a claim for reimbursement with the State Department of Education after a complete review of all those expenses. And they are auditing them very carefully. They'll look at staffing, make sure it's tied out with human capital. They'll look at all of the allowable expenses to make sure they're compliant with the program. Then we finally get our reimbursement from the state for monies that we had expended out of essentially our fund balance at the first of the year. When you look at the bar chart, you're seeing two types of data represented. One is our actual expenses in the light yellow. And then you see our budget in, how about burnt orange, whatever that color may be. We always budget to the maximum possible appropriation for federal programs. Many of the programs do allow you to carry over unused funds until the next year. It's generally not a use or lose type situation. But based on the program needs, the district's requirements for that year, we want to develop our budget to the maximum capacity, make sure we have the appropriate spending level set in our budget. And so we always budget to the maximum potential federal appropriation for each year. This is a snapshot of our operating revenues. Our operating revenues are considered the general, building, and child nutrition fund. And what we've done on the left is list our categories. Everything you'll see throughout our report is driven by OCAS. OCAS is the Oklahoma Cost Accounting System. We basically have zero flexibility on our coding and classification. It's all mandated by the State Department of Education. But what we did on the left side there was list our major categories of local, county, state, and federal revenue. And then further give you some information on how many types of revenue within each of those categories that we have to account for. Highlighted in yellow for each of our operating funds is the main revenue stream. Of course, for general fund, it's state aid, which is the 56% for $178 million. For building fund, it's going to be our AdVorum collections, which is budgeted for 95%. And for child nutrition, it's the federal program. One difference on our federal programs for child nutrition from our other federal programs that we've discussed is this is not an expense reimbursement type program. It's a meal participation. So it's a slightly different delicate balance of making sure that we've counted all of our students, they're submitted appropriately, because we have to, we get a refund on a per-child basis versus actual cost. And so there's some definite analysis that goes on to make sure we stay within that funding stream. At the bottom, we don't want to neglect to just mention that these are our operating funds. But we are setting the appropriation limit for all of the district funds, including capital improvement, like MAPS for kids and YES for kids, the sinking fund, the insurance fund. And that totals $571,865,500 is our total budget request for this year. Next, we're going to take a look at our expenditures. And the focus always that we strive for is a focus on our students. And we always liked this slide showing some of our kids from school. And we have areas that influence our expenditure budgeting. The strategic plan in the past has included the pre-K expansion, which has been approximately 30 classrooms per year. And that's the last two years, and again for the upcoming year. We've had the sixth grade transition back to elementary, the Teach for America partnership, and the National Academy Foundation. On the right, expenditure trend data, we look at our actual costs in all categories to help us allocate our expenditure budgets. And then on the bottom left, we take into consideration operational requirements. Each year, we look at PRE student enrollment projections. Again, this year, we're projecting an increase in enrollment. We consider inflationary costs. We look at labor benefit cost increase. And an increased custodial has become a little bit more of a common factor, either because of inflationary costs, or because as we implement MAPS and YES for Kids improvements, it's increased our square footage costs. The last component of looking at our federal expenditure budget is looking at the federal program and allocating our projected costs, assuming maximum utilization of the full allocation for federal programs. I mentioned the OCAS earlier. This is one of the components for expenditure funding. We're required to show all of our accounting by what's called the object code. And of course, the first two pieces, you're familiar with salaries and benefits. This is general fund. And as you can see, for labor cost, we budgeted 72.6% of our total budget is for labor costs. We then have professional services like legal and accounting and the audit, property services, and other services such as custodial, supplies, property, other services or smaller components. The last large one is the charter school. Charter schools are separate LEAs, but we receive their state aid funding directly to the district. And then we have to encumber and flow that money directly to the charter school. Those payments come through 11 times a year, and we issue payments 11 times a year. This is the other required component of expenditures is estimating them by function. And as you can see, our main classification is instructional costs, as it should be. And this is reflecting the district and really the superintendent's focus and challenge to all of us to make sure the funding is appropriately at the student and the school level. Instructional costs have increased from year to year. We'll have a chart on that in just a moment. And that's related to increased enrollment. I'm sorry, I got a tickle in my throat. Step increases for teachers, where we were trying to enrich the early salary schedules to make sure that we could be competitive with our neighboring districts to get the best and the brightest for our new teachers. And then, of course, the pre-K expansion. Here's the chart on the instructional costs. These are costs that deal directly in the classroom. Teachers, obviously, technology pieces, tutors, translators, and interpreters would also be part of our instructional costs. And as I mentioned just a moment ago, the focus of the district for instructional is reflected in the increased, thank you, the increased totals of instructional funding. The next slide, and I'm sorry, I haven't been referencing the budget book. This is on page 10 of your budget book. This is our support services. When we look at instructional costs as a focus for the district, I don't want to minimize that the support indirectly has a huge impact on the instructional needs of the students. This includes our superintendent, our principals, the counselors, media specialists, very clearly, directly related to instructional, but required by OCAS to be coded as a support part of our budget. The other classification primary is our other. As we've mentioned earlier, this reflects the expenditures where we flow through the state aid funding that we received on behalf of the charter schools back out directly to the charter schools. This is a snapshot of our operating expenditures for our operating funds, general, building, and child nutrition. We've highlighted the primary classifications under function. For instructional, I'm sorry, for general fund, it's instructional. Building, of course, is support. And child nutrition is classified as non-instructional. With that, we welcome any questions from any members of the board, the superintendent, chairperson, that I can help with. Bob?
I just have a quick question.
Thank you. Lot of pages there.
I was thinking what this was, on page 30?
Page 30?
Category 400 is purchased property services. And it really is a roller coaster ride, and I couldn't figure out exactly what that meant.
Yeah, on purchased property services, this is our insurance fund. And this is going to be primarily, we actually increased our budget, as you can see there. This is based on the hailstorm damage that we've had. And this is for the services to repair the rooftop units, the skylights, that type thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got a question. How do you come up with, I'm going to refer to page three for an example. Your 2013 budget compared to your, I'm just going to go to unaudited, which is your higher percentage. For the last, since 2010, '11, '12, and '13, none of those, and I'm going to come down to section 7, 69, 732, 733, 733. None of those figures are even as high. Your budget is so much lower than the actual for the last three years.
And I'm sorry, are we looking under child nutrition, under the breakfast lunch programs? Is that, did you say seven?
We're looking under child care, child and adult care food programs, English literacy, adult education services. I mean, your budget, 20,000, 50,000, 20,000, but in none of the, except for one or two in the past three years, did you even come up with? My point is, your budget is less than the past three years' actuals. Am I reading that correctly?
I'll make sure I'm going to read it correctly. Okay, there I see 769. On the left are our actual expenditures, which were the 21,000, 18,000, 15,000. Make sure we're on the same line.
Yes.
And now, let me get my ruler on here, we're budgeting about $20,000.
I mean, if your actual's 21,000, let's go to the next line. Your actual's 65,000, but you budgeted 50,000. And then for the last two years, you were above 50,000. My point is, why would you budget under the actual for the last two years?
If you look on the very last column, we did reduce the budget a little bit. Looking at the federal programs, this year was the latest that we had received any kind of guidance from federal programs at the state to help us drive our projections. And we work closely with our federal program administrators, and they even commented that normally, we have more solid numbers. When we're building this projection here on the federal programs, we look at it individually, but we also build in a contingency to make sure if there's an increase in expenditures or if we have some new federal programs that aren't listed, we need to have that capacity. Most of these, we tried to meet with the administrator to get a projection. When it comes down to 20,000 versus 25,000, we're really looking at the grand total once we get past our major programs like Title I and IDEA. We want to list them to show that they're inclusive and have that run rate. But we took our guidance really from just where we thought the programs would be in total. The district is still protected as far as capacity. But that's actually a really good question, Mr. Ellis. I can go back and look at our notes. There's a great deal of information behind this for those programs, and get back with you.
Are those Title I funds?
Title I is a cluster, and it's all at the top. It's the third line under pass-through that totals, the 2014 budget is $31,991,000. But those are separate programs. And some of those come and go, frankly. There's a lot of little programs that we get that are initiated maybe by the sites. And so we try to do our best projection overall.
I totally agree with that, but I think you need to be careful, you know, kind of like my household, if I have an electric bill and every time it's $100, and then I budget 50, I mean, that's.
I agree. I agree.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It appears that you have a slight increase in local funds. Is that correct?
Yes, for general fund. And that was mainly related to our projected increase in our net assessed valuations.
And so how many million anticipated increase for local?
For local, it was going to be, I believe, about, I think it was about $900,000, let me double check myself.
Okay.
$856,000 was the projection.
And then you anticipate a decrease in federal funding, correct?
Correct.
And do you, what was that figure, down how much millions?
Well, it was a combination, one of looking at our ARA expenditures, because last year, we still had first quarter ARA spend down. And then the effect of sequestration, we didn't have estimates on sequestration or the actuals at the time that we went public or published our numbers. We projected, I believe it's about 8%, 5% to 8% on our federal programs for Title I and IDEA, our main program. And for Title I, it came in at 4.99. So we had a little bit more of a severe cut based on the information we were getting. But again, we built in that contingency line that could be used either for additional programs or changes in the funding. One comment I want to make when we're looking at the numbers like this is, we do an initial budget to establish the spending authority. But what we do, will do this year is an amended budget after year-end, which is very common in school districts. Our district hasn't adopted that process until this year. And so you have another opportunity to evaluate what really is happening instead of trying to build a budget, you know, 60 days before this year has even ended. So we're looking forward to having that opportunity to update our budget once we have more factual information.
Okay, but the best estimate with the available information now is that there is a decrease in total federal funding for our district. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the amount of the decrease in dollars is approximately?
If we're looking at the, when you get to my budget, for general fund, last year, we had budgeted potential appropriations of the 60, really $61 million. This year, we're at $56 million. And we still feel fairly confident that that's going to give us the capacity for the full amount. So that's probably where you're seeing a reflection of this sequestration, our estimates.
Do you think about 5 million?
Yes. Yes, sir. And this is of the appropriation. Appropriation does not necessarily equal revenue. Revenue's driven by the expenses that we actually cut and get reimbursed. When you look at the historical trends just to the left, just even for 2013, for just general fund, we had budgeted $61 million. Our projection is about $46 million actual revenue that'll come through. And that's tied to our expenses that we were able to claim and get reimbursed.
For the upcoming year?
Just for the current year, I'm sorry.
You'd figure we'll spend $46 million in the upcoming year or the last year?
We think we'll spend $46 million in the current year, which is FY 2013, getting ready to end in about two weeks.
And do you have an estimate, how much dollars of federal funds we will spend in the upcoming year, that FY 14? Do you do that when you construct?
No. All we can do is budget for the maximum potential expenditures. Other than that, we have to look to the program directors and to see what we may actually come in at. We have to have that full capacity. So we will always project that conceivably, we'll spend every penny that we're appropriated for federal dollars. We have to budget that way for that capacity. It changes from year to year on timing of expenditures, on focus of the district, staffing, those type components.
Okay, so I get it that it's difficult.
Yes, sir.
But it's, but last year, or the year we're just about to complete, our federal spending was $46 million.
Yes.
And we had budgeted for this current year, just as you have done for the upcoming year, an amount that's the total amount of federal funds.
Right.
And do you know that number?
I'm a little unclear.
Well, I'm trying to compare apples and apples. I'm trying to compare apples and apples. I mean, what's the 46,000 we spent last year?
What do you think our, I would have to defer to our program administrators, and I don't want to put them on the spot per se.
No, no, nor do you want.
But that is, they're over the programs. We create the capacity, their budgets are filed, it's part of the whole plan for the district. So I'd have to defer to them on what they think their expenditures are going to be, their total appropriations next year. And I think what might be appropriate is for me to get with the major program folks, get their projection, and provide that response to separately.
Okay, that's fine. We, you know, we can figure out what percent of our federal funds we actually spent in the current year. And then we could look at the total federal fund budget for the upcoming year, and we could figure the same percent, maybe.
Maybe, because the complication of that is the timing of those expenditures. If they occur all in June, I can't file that claim till July. I cannot obviously get that money back into the fiscal year. But if we spend them earlier, say by March, I can get the claims filed, I can't, my team will get the claims filed, and we get reimbursed for that. So, you know, driving that revenue stream is not only what's my appropriation, but what's the timing of those expenses to get us reimbursed back from the various programs.
And finally, looking at the anticipated state revenues, where you're estimating a $6 million increase over the prior year. But it's largely earmarked.
That's correct.
And could you tell us briefly, what is, I mean, you covered it slightly earlier, but what's it earmarked for?
Some of the earmarks will be increase in staffing related to increased enrollment. More students, changes our class ratios, we have to staff according to our formulas. So we would have increased teaching, staff. We know that we're going to have additional pre-K implementation, about 30 classrooms this year, plus a full-time pre-K assistant. That's additional staffing. And then the costs associated with all of the staffing, not just the base pay, but all of the benefits that are the district's funded, like the teacher retirement matching, they're federally funded, workers' comp, unemployment, so on and so forth. The bulk for general fund is related to labor costs that will increase related to this increase.
Okay, now, the earmarking you just described, is that the earmarking done by our district or by the state appropriation legislation?
Well, generally speaking, state aid is our discretionary fund.
Yeah, but this increase is earmarked, I read. Do you know anything about that? For instance, third grade retention, which we'll be faced with for the first time. I just wondered how tied up the $6 million is before we can exercise any discretion. Because we do exercise discretion when we staff.
We do generally have mandates that exceed, that are not fully funded. And that could be an academic mandate, that could be a benefit or staffing mandate. And that's where discretionary money, while it is discretionary, gets chewed up through unfunded mandates. I know academics could speak to several of those over the years. My easiest example is national board certified teachers. You know, we pay those out each year out of our state. We have a program, we receive specific funding for them, but it's just the base bonus. It doesn't, does not fund the district's FICA and Medicare costs. And we still have paid those out of part of our discretionary funding. That's just one example where we're mandated to do something and it's perhaps not fully funded. So.
Okay, here's my last inquiry.
Okay, sure.
I promise.
That's fine.
The, my. The, my concern is that it, that we very well may be faced with a reduction in our per pupil funding. Have you been able to determine whether we're up or down in per pupil funding from all sources combined?
Current, for next year?
For next year, no.
Zero idea. Have not got part, we have received, we only see the state legislative information, which is statewide, talking about the approved budgets at a statewide level. But we have not received any specific district information. Because the formula is self-equalizing, a benefit to another district will be a detriment to another district. So, when we talk about like chargeables, property tax, if you're in a district that has a high amount of ad valorem tax collections, your state aid goes down. And then that frees up money for another district that has very little ad valorem. And there's fifty-seven components of that equalization formula. So, we can look at the legislative action, we can see that there appears to be evidence that, that the budget is increasing for schools. But then it has to be ran through this equalization formula. How's everybody else doing on their property tax, on all of their other chargeables, on their enrollment? And that's where that first one.
Okay, but you, you've compiled a budget based on the best available information for anticipated revenue.
Yes.
And so, we've also projected our enrollment for next year. Why couldn't we therefore, from the front end, determine what it looks like our per student funding from federal, state, and local sources is?
We, we should and we could, and.
But you have not.
But I did not.
But it'd be really interesting to see what it looks like compared to what we know it was last year, wouldn't it?
Right. One of the, when I was working on my slides, and I was almost there to the answer of your question, but not quite. I was looking at my state aid slide and laying in the district's enrollment and the charter of school enrollment. Because I was thinking I needed to be prepared, and I didn't get there, so I apologize for that and that.
Oh, yes, sir. Perhaps you could, you know, run that final look and let us know.
Sure.
Thank you for your time.
The only other thing that we could add to that was that, that at the end of the month, beginning of July maybe, the State Department of Education gives what they call their begot, which is their best guess at this time. So they don't even know what, what the amount of money is going to be for a student. Couple of years ago, 2009, I think, the per student was like about thirty-two hundred dollars, a little bit more than that. This last year, our per student was about three thousand and thirty, three thousand and twenty, three thousand and thirty. So per student, we're getting about a hundred and seventy or a hundred and eighty dollars less today than we got back in 2009. It, it will be interesting to see when we get our allocation notice at the end of this month, what the state says the per pupil is going to be in state aid. We'll get that number as soon as we get it, we'll pop it out to the, to the board members. And maybe give them the history of what it's looked like from a, from a per pupil over the last four or five years. That, that'd be helpful information.
Yes. And we do have that, just in preparation. Didn't get to that one, I apologize.
Okay. No. Jean, if you would, bring back Justin, maybe next, at our next meeting, bring back Justin's request. And certainly if we can figure out what we were per, per pupil.
Yes, we have that.
In 2013, and then maybe project what it looks like we're going to have in 2014. And I know that one of the things that I have, just as information, Bill, is that the appropriation was up seventy-four million. And the statement that I have was the majority of the money, more than one point eight billion, goes directly to school districts through states' funds. So, maybe we'll see if there's.
That's for commented statewide.
That's right. So, we'll see, I guess, where that goes. Thank you, Jean.
Thank you. So, next is, action is a request for the, someone to make a motion to, and Craig, I don't want to cover your turf here.
Do we have a motion to accept the budget as presented?
I shall move.
Thank you. Thank you, my friend, Craig. Any other discussion?
Yes, do you have a question for you? I was looking through it, and I didn't really see it, I probably dismissed it. But what does the number show for next year in terms of salary increase? Is that a visit down? Is there somewhere, I'm sure I dismissed it.
We look at labor costs in total, base pay and benefits. We certainly see an increase in labor costs. Generally, it's a conservative-type projection for compensation changes. We're primarily driving, driven by the number of employees, formula staffing changes, and the known cost increases for benefits. So, there's not a specific evaluation at this time of any compensation changes for the future year.
Will you have that number some point in the future for us?
Yes, we will.
And will this impact class size at all? In terms of students in class, will we have fewer students per class, or will we have more students per class?
Because we're projecting an increase in student enrollment, and primarily it's going to be, I think, in the elementary. Because of sixth grade moving down, we've got pre-K starting up, we follow a formula to make sure we stay within the district's guidelines for staffing. We have that information available, and that's maybe one thing I could cover as a special page next time, is some of the formulas for staffing for each of the grade levels. Might give you a little heads-up or familiarity on that. So, enrollment does affect staffing, staffing does affect costs, and if enrollment's up, costs will go up. I don't say exponentially, but because of the benefit element, it's, we can pretty much assume it's going to be greater than the increase in state aid for the increased enrollment.
So, virtually then we're penalized for having more students, is what you're saying.
And the, the part about it that really makes you want to pull your hair out is that the cost goes up because you have more students, and the revenue has been going down because the state has been giving us less money per student. And this has been, if you do a run rate over the last five years, you see that, that we're not getting the same amount of money per student. And it, so it makes it, it makes it a very difficult situation for us as far as raises for this next year. When we finish this year and we get into the budget, and we see what our revenue is, then we'll have some idea about what discretionary money we've got, if any. But that's, the state of Oklahoma basically operates on the budget. The second week of the month, of last month, whatever their collections were, that determines how much money we're going to get this month. And if they, collections were down, then your budget is cut. And we're basically, the, the budget in Oklahoma is pretty much a hand-to-mouth kind of operation. We've been lucky, the state's been, the economy's been growing, and we haven't had a cut in a long time, maybe thirteen or fourteen months. But it, it's, it's an interesting time.
So Carl, what you're, what you're telling us then is that the teachers' bonuses is the only variable that we have with regard to adjusting the budget if we're down, right?
I didn't hear what you said, sir.
So are the teachers' bonuses the only real variable factor that you can adjust to compensate for these dips?
Compensation, like for salaries and those kinds of things. When we get a good idea of where we are financially, we'll be able to then negotiate in good faith about how much money we've got that's discretionary. That's how that works. We hope to be able to get that information early in the year, as opposed to later. Thank you.
Any, any further discussion? All for the vote?
Having received six I votes, zero N votes, motion carries, that's me.
Thank you, Jean. Now we have public comments, and we just have one presenter, James, is it Nimmo?
Yes.
Thank you. From Belle Isle School.
Yes, District Two. Hello, Mr. Ellison. And I'd like to introduce my partner, Don Chabot. We live at twenty-four oh-six Northwest Fifty-Ninth, which is at the north end of the ball field behind Belle Isle Enterprise School. We're very distressed about the new construction, which has created additional roofing surface, which creates the runoff that is flooding our house. I've drawn a map, I'm not a trained draftsman, but I tried to draw it as accurately as I could, freehand. As you can see, the runoff from the new construction runs into a depression which goes to the north, where it meets an existing drainage depression that goes east and west. Just opposite where the, where they intersect is our house at twenty-four oh-six. Our neighbor couldn't be here today, but he also got some water in his last flood at the end of May, who lives at twenty-four ten, plus our neighbor on the other side, twenty-four oh-four. It's our concern that the drainage, the existing drain is on the wrong side of the track. The track acts as a small dam, which when we have significant rainfall, creates a great impediment to the flow of that water. Also, there is a large dirt mound approximately seven feet high, left over from excavation during the construction, which also impedes the water. And there's a remnant of a plastic barrier that was there at one time, which is, which had been ineffective during the last flooding rain. So what we would like to request is that the track or the drainage depressions be re-engineered to channel that water in a more northwesterly direction away from the line of houses that is below the level of that ball field.
It's about a four-foot drop.
Four-foot slope to get to the backyards of the houses along Fifty-Ninth Street. On the south side of the ball field, there is an existing channel which is paved with concrete and runs east and west. And I tried to get ahold of some neighbors over the weekend, but I only found one that was at home. And they have had no problem with rain in excessive amounts as we've had. So, we're suggesting that possibly, of course, we're not engineers, but we're just suggesting, that a channelized paved drainage ditch be used somehow to alleviate this excessive water that is coming from the new construction at Belle Isle. We noticed that one of the goals of the, of the board is to provide a good physical environment for the students. And we also hope that that extends to a good physical environment for the taxpayers who live adjacent to Belle Isle Enterprise School.
I might add that I've lived in that residence for the last forty years, and I have not had any problem with water until the construction at Belle Isle Enterprise started, the new school and so forth. They have added new drains, they've gone along with the old, and they're all matched out, and they're coming together all in one place, which is my backyard. My home was built, for instance, my house is here, and the schoolyard is down here. That water's been so deep, it was overflowing. When I see people walking in the wall, they'll let on the track, I can see their ankles in my backyard, which sort of dropped. The water is going over the top of that, and into my backyard. This time I've got flooded, most of us don't have flood insurance. I didn't buy flood insurance, so, anyway, I didn't want to, and I want to thank Mr. Burkey for addressing, helping me out on this deal. He recommended that I come here tonight, I know you can't address it directly, but directly, I wish you could, in time, to look the situation over. It's really distressful. I'm a seventy-one-year-old man, it's difficult for me to get up and walk through water running over my shoes. So, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we will move on to special business. Presentation and possible vote. Are you, are Keith, you introducing these?
No, you never put the coin.
Okay. Okay, Prodigal Sports.
Is that the microphone that's actually tall enough?
Would you just introduce yourself and?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Bob Funk, I'm the owner and CEO of Prodigal. We are a premier sports team and sports entertainment, special events company, operates here in Oklahoma City. We operate numerous brands in and, in and without Oklahoma City. On behalf of me and my entire staff, BVPs and directors that are here, I'd like to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to, to take the time to present to you today. I'm going to just briefly open up and then hand it over to John Allgood and Darren Ransley, because I'll ramble on, and I know we only have a few, fifteen minutes to speak. But what I wanted to, what I'm here to talk about today is, we have activated and, and achieved a USL Pro franchise. And I'll let them explain a little bit more about the USL Pro. Essentially, what it is, is a triple-A soccer franchise that operates in conjunction partnership with the MLS. Not unlike our minor league franchise, the Oklahoma City Barons operates with the NHL, in terms of AHL versus NHL. So, we, we're here today to present that, that franchise, and have the opportunity to hopefully lease Taft Stadium. We are, at Prodigal, are about a couple of different things. First of all, integrity. Secondly, we are about financial stability. And thirdly, we're about community, community partnership. We have, have always taken as, as part of our, our core of what we do in everything we've, we've operated, whether it was the Blazers, the Oklahoma City Barons, the Oklahoma City Redhawks, and now this USL Pro franchise. We'd like to work in concert with the venue and with the, the venue and the group that we're operating with. And we'd like to operate in a partnership, because if not, neither party in my mind benefits. So, what we try to do is, is, is get together with the venue and the organization, seems like we're having some, some issues with our, our slides back here. Get with the, the venue and, and the group that operates it, and figure out how is best for us to operate together so that we can move forward mutually, in, in the best benefit, benefit for both parties. So, and with that, I'm going to hand off to, to John Allgood and let him kind of, kind of continue on.
Hello, everyone. First, let me say it's a privilege to even have this opportunity to talk to you all about bringing soccer, professional soccer, triple-A level soccer, right under the MLS. You know, the USL Pro has an agreement with the MLS for several pathways, including an affiliation, official affiliation, which is very much like we had at the ballpark. My background, some of you may know, I was the executive director of the Redhawks for seven years, and then worked there for, since nineteen ninety-eight. So I, I have seen, I've worked for the Funk family for quite some time, but I have seen what a, a new stadium can do for, for a community, including, you know, the ballpark in Bricktown, and what that did from a community standpoint. And the things that, you know, that are happening at Taft Stadium are very exciting, and we think that it could have the same type of impact for the school district, but also the community around Taft. And what we want to talk about right now is, is what our deal would be, what we are proposing. And we realistically think that we can draw about five thousand fans per game for a USL Pro team. In that, and we've had some conversations with Keith and with Lynn on what type of financial project would work, in that, we were going to share two dollars a ticket that would go back to the school district that you could use for, you know, whatever you choose to, whether that's to go back into the schools, whether that's to go back into the athletic department, whether that's to go back into the facility. And one important item I'd like to talk about on the facility is, is that we have always, when, whether we've been in the, the ballpark in Bricktown with the Redhawks, or we were with the, the Blazers at the Cox Arena, or we were with the Barons currently at the Cox Center. We invest our own money back into the facility too. Yes, you guys are putting millions of dollars into it, but we also see ways that money you don't have, that we can reinvest into it to make the facility better from an entertainment standpoint. And we've always done that, and the history will show that. We were also willing to, to share revenue from food and beverage, and we estimate that we'll do about a five-dollar per cap net, and we'd be willing to share some of that with you. What that means annually is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in ticket revenue, and an additional four hundred thousand dollars in value and media covers and advertising that would promote Taft in the Oklahoma City Public School District. I'd like to introduce Darren Ransley now.
Thank you very much. I want to talk about our team, Prodigal, who we are, what we stand for. Prodigal brings a massive depth of staff. Our depth of staff is not just local, it is international. We've worked on many, many programs indeed around this world. We've worked on National Hockey League. In September, we're bringing in an NHL game. We've run two MLS games in the state of Oklahoma. We've worked triple-A, we brought the national championship. We've worked AAA, we've brought the national championship here for a number of years. We've also worked with ESPN and X Games. Showing this allows us to tell you that we are very competent, very confident in what we're trying to achieve in Oklahoma. We're looking at what I class as big-league mentality, and I'll explain that here momentarily. We also currently work on production of professional ball writing and also our NCFR that is ongoing in the state of Oklahoma. Again, professional ball writing, raising that bar where people can see us on a day-to-day basis executing, planning, and producing. We work with a number of governing bodies around this country and around other countries. We also work with organizations. We've worked in branding, we've worked in marketing, we are a consulting firm. People come to us and ask us for the knowledge, and then we work with them. We are, what I'd say, somebody who gets to sit at the table with key players. We're asked, we're invited, we sit down, we bring the answers where the questions are being raised. We also execute at a high, high standard. We do on a day-to-day, day-to-day basis.
You see on behind you there, if you take a look at the screen, these are some of the people that we have worked with in the past and currently work with. And, you know, if you guys would choose to, you know, have a reference to call, to find out about us, you can call any one of those people, from John Daniels, who's the general manager of the Texas Rangers, to Patrick La Forge of the Edmonton Oilers, Randy Mobley and Branch Rickey, and those are AAA baseball leagues that we currently work with, even though we don't own the Redhawks anymore, we do work for them from a sponsorship standpoint. The PBR, the American Hockey League, the PRCA, which is professional rodeo, United Soccer Leagues, who we just got our franchise deal done recently, you can call them. And then locally, Tom Anderson, who I would invite you to call, who is the assistant city manager, who is over the recreational, the ballpark, the Cox Center, the Chesapeake, the State Fair, and the working relationship that we have with the city as tenants in those environments. And then finally, March of Dimes and Lori Applecam.
We also have excelled in history with media outlets. We've worked with ESPN, NBC, BBC. This gives us the knowledge to turn around and say that we understand their process. When we want to televise games in the future, if that was our chosen path, we're ready to go. We have those members of staff at our disposal, if you will. We also specialize in one-off events. This week, we're running the March of Dimes. We are also moving into the Fourth of July where we'll be having a fireworks presentation downtown. This shows again our versatility. We plan, we implement, and then we execute. So from beginning to end, we are ready with a large number of staff. One thing that I did want to talk about also is community. We're very much invested with our family, or the Prodigal family, if you will. We understand that when we work with someone, we have to buy into what they're doing. We're very much bought into March of Dimes, local charities, et cetera. We're always there equalling what we can with their energy. A number of other events that happen, and this ties into Taft Stadium, if you will, we've worked with a lot of large arenas, a lot of large facilities. We bring in the expertise to bring one-day events also, before the Dave Matthews Band, Def Leppard, Bryan Adams. And what this allows us to do is, we can also talk about additional exposure for Taft and for the public schooling system by bringing in these large events. It also brings in additional revenue. At this moment, it's not on the table, we're looking at soccer, but we always like to think on a larger scale, if you will.
Okay, now I'll go back to franchise ownership, and I think this is a very important key for a decision to be made. You know, we talked about the Oklahoma City Blazers, which the Funk family owned from 2000 to 2008, 2009, which kept local ownership for the Blazers. We also talked about in 2004, when they bought the Oklahoma Redhawks, actually 2003, 2004 was our first season operating. 2005, we were able to break the all-time Oklahoma baseball attendance record, where we drew over 500,000, 7,500 fans per game, over 72 games a season, that's a significant, you know, achievement. And that has to go back to the commitment that the Funk family and Bob made to, you know, investing into the ballpark, investing into making the fan experience the best possible, and that's what we're going to do when we bring in soccer. We talked about the Blazers again, you know, it was important to have local ownership, and the Funk family stepped up when it needed to take that on. And then finally, we currently own the Barons, and it's another AAA. We're talking about the Redhawks, and we're also talking about the Barons being AAA in USL Pro, which we want to bring in, is also AAA, again, going back to the big-league city. There's only one soccer league that has an affiliation with the MLS, and that's the USL Pro. And very much similar, we had 28 players called up to the NHL over the last three years. We're changing perceptions of bringing the highest level of hockey into Oklahoma City. We've already invested significant money into the Cox Center, we have true affiliation with the NHL team, and then we really stick by the value and integrity of our ticket sales. You know, we have to make sure that there is value in our ticket sales when we sell our tickets, because if we don't, then you don't get your $2 per ticket, which is a revenue stream for Oklahoma City. And then keeping the value of our sponsorship packages as we move forward. And then finally, it's youth development with the hockey team.
One thing I wanted to quickly add there also is, when we look at hockey and look at our history, a number of items comes up where, when we started our hockey team three years ago, the Oklahoma City Barons, we knew that we had a very small amount of humans or young humans, the youth of today, that were invested in our program. We only had a target audience of around about 200 youths that were playing hockey, very, very small number indeed. We aimed at those families, we aimed at their friends, relationships, et cetera. And we grew that number, that small number, to 3,500, to 4,000 people per game, just aiming at those families. Now, when we look at where we are today, and we look at soccer, there are 30,000 youth soccer players in Oklahoma City right this minute. So it's a larger pool that we can approach their families, friends, relationships, et cetera. So we believe that the 5,000 number for Taft Stadium is possibly a lower number than we would really like to achieve, so I just want to place that on the table. Moving on, MLS. There are a number of what I call big-league mentality teams in Oklahoma right this moment. We have the NBA currently, which I'm going to put to one side, and I'd like to talk about the American Hockey League, which is the AHL, the National Hockey League, which is the NHL. I'd like to talk about AAA Baseball, which is PCL, Pacific Coast League, and I'd also like to talk about Major League Baseball. They are connected together. The PCL feeds through to the Major League Baseball teams. So a player can be in a lower division, if you will, or AAA, they excel and they go up to Major League. The same with AHL to NHL. A player can be in the AHL, play very, very well, the next game can be playing in the NHL. This turns around in Oklahoma City and says that we have a major-league mentality. We expect to see NBA basketball, we expect to see AHL, and we expect to see PCL at our level. The equivalent here for us is USL Pro. That is what we would like to bring to Oklahoma City. That's what we'd like to bring to Taft Stadium. It feeds through to the MLS. There are relationships and affiliates with MLS and USL Pro. We would like to see that level continued in Oklahoma City. That way, the youth of today can turn around and see that there are decent players that are here in Oklahoma City, follow their team, follow their favorite players, and they will migrate up naturally to the MLS. So that's big-league mentality.
Okay, so in summary, you can see who we are from a Prodigal standpoint. You know, we have nineteen years' experience operating professional sports teams. We've hosted Division One athletic competitions, that's NCAA regionals, which are very difficult to come by, but we've been able to do that. Over 22 years' experience operating large sports and entertainment facilities, whether it's the Bricktown Ballpark, Cox Arena. Thirteen years' experience in event management. We have on our staff, we have 50 years in ticket sales, and more than 20 years' experience in event staffing. Now, think about from an event staffing standpoint, we're talking about, we had to staff the Bricktown Ballpark, and our company also, part of our Fox company, also staffs Gallagher IBA and Boone Pickens Stadium and Oklahoma State. So we had, you know, it's not an easy thing to do if you've never done it, if you've never staffed a facility, it's not an easy thing, because you're talking about ticket takers, ushers, bathroom cleaning, you know, all of it, and we are willing to do that at Taft, and that is not something that you can just show up and do, you have had experience in doing. Basically, we're great tenants, I don't mind saying that. And then from a food and beverage standpoint, I'd like to spend a little bit of time on this. We have over 20 years of experience in food and beverage sales. We own our own food and beverage company. We are trained in beer sales, and we are asking to be able to sell beer at Taft Stadium. Now, one thing I do want to speak to, to hopefully calm some of your nerves, is that we have sold beer at the Bricktown Ballpark in our events for a long time, and we had very limited problems. The reason why is, is that we educate our fans on responsible drinking, and then we also train our staff, which we have been instructed by the ABLE Commission and the Oklahoma City Police Department on what's the proper way to train our staff to make sure that everyone has a great time and we aren't creating any issues. And if you will go back and look publicly, or if you want to go talk to the Oklahoma City Police Department, the ABLE Commission, we have a clean record, and we always have, and that's because we spend a lot of time and money focusing in on the fan experience. And we believe that families should have a choice if they want, parents, to be able to have a beer at a game. We are only proposing that we have beer sales at 12 soccer games. We are not asking for any permanent beer signage, we would just have the, you know, the carts that we would have out there. And then we're going to provide sections that alcohol will not be permitted, and we've done that at the ballpark to great success. Like I said, we've operated, you know, for 13 years at the ballpark, and we had 72 games, and the beer was part of the, you know, was part of the fun for a lot of people, but the reason why it was, it was part of the fan experience, the family experience, is because we educate and we train.
We'd like to talk just very, very briefly on why we chose USL Pro. It's very important for us to turn around and say, three tiers here that I'd like to see. At the top of the triangle there, if you will, Major League Soccer. The next tier down, USL Pro. Underneath that is the Professional Development League. I'd also like to say, on one side, there is the NASL. Now, the NASL is slightly different from USL Pro, and I want to lay one thing out here. There is a conduit path from youth through to professional, through to Major League Soccer. It is a conduit path, it has affiliations, et cetera, it is ready and sitting in play. And as Bob said earlier, we currently have a pro franchise, we have USL Pro. In history also, USL Pro in conjunction with NASL, there have been a number of games. Both leagues can play each other, teams can interplay, if you will. And at the moment, it is an 80% win for USL Pro. And for me, that turns around and says statistically, it is a higher quality of soccer, and that's what I want to see in the state of Oklahoma. When we're looking at AHL, when we're looking at PCL, I'd like to bring that equal level where fans can turn around and say, this is quality soccer, this is what I want to see on a day-to-day basis. I know we're getting very rushed with time, so I'm going to let Bob finish you.
Just to finish up, because I don't want to take any more of the time than we need to. You've got the proposal, please take a look at it. You've got all our staff bios along there as well, as well as recommendation letters, I think we're missing one from Chesapeake, which just arrived today, which we weren't able to get to you. But we will send that over to you as well. In the end, what Prodigal, what our founding principles are about, community and providing Oklahoma City with the absolute best experience possible, and the absolute best and highest performing sports franchises possible in Oklahoma City. That was our charge from the city of Oklahoma City when it came to the AHL, and that's what we continue on today. The more important thing is for us is it's not just about the sports, it's about the community experience and what we're giving back. I like to always say, smiles on the in, smiles on the out. It's important for us, it's a community that we're giving back, not only to our patrons, but to the local community as well, whether it's Special Olympics, you know, Mr. McLaughlin's Fields and Futures, I think is a great program as well. And that's what we also want to do, is tie our team in with several communities, at least three community partners, like we've done with our hockey team, in order to give back to the local Oklahoma community and the Oklahoma City Public School System. Thank you for your time today, we appreciate it.
If you want to just, I want to allow some time. Craig, have we allowed some time for questions? Bob, have you got questions? Justin?
What is your attendance for, you currently own the hockey team, right?
Correct.
What's your attendance there? Two to 4,000, is that what I heard, two to 4,000?
It's roughly, right about 3,600 on average.
And then out of that 3,600, what is the average per attendant spending on food and beverage?
We're, I think we're, that's a great question, I think we're seven, is it, we're $8, $8 ahead.
And instead of just telling me this, if you guys could kind of prove that at another time, kind of follow me with that.
Sure, yeah, and we can provide all that documentation.
And I would say also, a fair comparison would probably be the ballpark, just because it's being outside, and the water and the beverage that would be going, and you're looking about $8 ahead there too.
Yeah, I don't think baseball, in my eyes, baseball and soccer and hockey are in the same category.
I'm just taking out foods.
Got you. I agree with you on that.
And comparing us to hockey is a little bit apples and oranges too.
Well, compared to baseball, is apples and oranges as well?
For the outdoor sport and the type of, not considering the sport itself, but the event overall, I would say actually baseball is probably a fairer comparison than hockey. If you try and compare the two sports, yes, hockey and soccer are synonymous, but from an overall event structure and the attendance per and what that looks like, I would say baseball is actually probably closer. Now, football is probably the closest because of the limited game, number of games, but baseball from an outside event, overall exposure and just the general type of event, I think you're better off comparing those two.
Okay. And then, how many people, I'm just going to take this, how many people, how many other teams are in the hockey league that you're in currently?
Thirty.
Thirty, and then how many are in the soccer that you're proposing in this league?
It's 12 currently.
Is that a growing league?
Yeah, they're expanding. They've got two more prospects within the region, and then I think they've got, actually, one more that they haven't announced. And then they've got two more prospects in this region as well as, I think, two out west.
Okay. How long have those teams been going, the other 12?
They vary from, anywhere from one year, two years, to I believe six, seven.
The whole idea is pretty new.
The whole idea is fairly new, except for some of the East Coast teams, those have been there for quite a while. I don't have the respective numbers on those. Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right. These guys are my subject matter experts. So actually, I'll have these guys answer.
Yeah, and I think if you're looking for the question, it seems like you're going down the road of stability a little bit. Four of the last six MLS teams have come from USL Pro.
Okay.
And so, and that just shows you, you know, and Orlando is probably going to be next, and there's a lot of talk that Orlando would be the next MLS team in there to USL Pro team. Vancouver was one of them, Portland was one of them, that has moved up, and so it is the clear path, you know, it's a very healthy league, strong league.
And then, out of those, let's just say the 30, because I'm just going to compare these apples and oranges, the 30 in, that are in the hockey league, where do you, what's the average attendance?
Depends on who you ask. The average attendance for the league as a whole is, I believe, roughly, this year, I haven't seen the final numbers based on playoffs, but it's going to be in around the probably 5,500 to 6,500.
And that's including larger markets as well?
Yeah, that includes larger markets, but also includes small markets. Hershey has been sold out for the last 15, 20-plus years, and they're sold out at about 8,500. So that's a very small market, so it really doesn't, it's not comparable to market size necessarily, it's more of the, more of the volume itself.
Okay, and what's the average for the soccer leagues?
It's all over the board, because you have some stadiums that are really nice, and stadiums that are not so nice in starting off, but it's going to be in that 4,000 range. I mean, I can't, like, there's going to be some that are doing 6,000 and 7,000, you're going to do some that are doing like 2,000.
But do you guys think that we'll do over the 5? I mean, you're projecting 5, but you think we'll go over the 5?
Yeah.
And then my last question is, I'm sorry, I already asked that question, it was about the food and beverage. Well, I'm, just thank you.
Our attendance numbers are based on Scarborough research, market research within the given market, a lot of different factors that we've come up with, and also the kind of historical presentation of the other teams and how they've been able to maximize attendance, so.
Yeah, and that's a good point. The research we did at Scarborough, there's over 300,000 people just in the Oklahoma City market that are interested in soccer. Not talking about playing soccer, but interested in soccer and would attend a soccer game.
Where are you going to go whenever we have road testing?
Let's just keep going, man. Let's keep going.
Thank you.
My question is, is this team coming to Oklahoma City whether you do or don't partner with Oklahoma City Public Schools?
Yes.
Bill?
Does Prodigal currently own this soccer franchise?
Yes, there's a letter in there that I believe states, it's from Tim Holt with the USL Pro, that we have a franchise agreement that states such.
Okay, and regardless of whether we eventually enter into a contract, Prodigal, in the district, is this soccer franchise going to come and perform in Oklahoma City?
Yeah, that's our intention of signing the agreement, is that we believe in soccer, we believe in what the possibility of soccer is here in Oklahoma City, regardless of the venue. And to answer Michelle's question here, you know, we, once we grow out, hopefully we do grow out, I don't want that to sound bad, either we grow out or we renovate, one of the two, that we keep building over time, because our, really, our goal is to bring an MLS team to Oklahoma City, and we think that's the best first step to do so within the next 10 years.
So, when will be, when will the season begin for the first time in Oklahoma City?
If we, if a lease were to be approved, we would be looking at the 2014 season, right after the renovations are completed at that stadium.
And if I understand it correctly, what you're seeking from us tonight is for us to agree to negotiate a contract with Prodigal, so that you can present 12 soccer games?
Twelve plus.
Yes, we're looking at not only the soft games, but we're also looking at preseason games. We're also looking at partnering with an MLS team and bringing in what Iowa class as, you have a first team, and then you have a second team. We have an opportunity to bring in the second team games to Oklahoma City. So again, showing that creative level of soccer here in Oklahoma City. So it would be more than 12, 12 is just the season, we would look at more beyond that.
Okay, so that, regardless of the number of games, which you think will be a minimum of 12?
Yes.
You, all you're seeking to contract with us about is renting the stadium for soccer?
That is correct.
Okay, the, the individual events that you showed us were disinformational about what you do.
That is correct, there are opportunities for later growth, which obviously will show, if you will, bringing in different events, which is a revenue strength for Oklahoma Public Schools and System. But not only that, it allows people to put their eyes on what the schooling system is doing, so it's a growth opportunity.
Okay, and, and you offer no guaranteed rent, but rather?
We do, we offer $1,500 per game.
Per game?
Yeah, $1,500 per game. And then we're picking up all the expenses of, we'll pick up all the staffing expenses, everything that comes along with it.
Utilities?
Yeah, whatever we, that number we end up coming up with.
Okay, and then, on top of the $1,500 and all the expenses, you would pay $2 per paid ticket?
Right.
What would a ticket sell for?
It ranges, it's going to be, we're going to make it really affordable, so it's going to be anywhere from, you know, depending on what deal we can get cut, it's going to be $7 to $8, up to $20, depending on where the seat is.
And then, additionally, there would be a percentage of concessions?
Correct.
And you estimate that your spectators will spend $5?
That's a net number, not a gross number. That's a net number, so after cost of goods and staffing. So then we would go into a split after the net.
A net concessions, not the gross?
Right.
But you were giving us a estimate that the normal spectator would spend $5 on concessions per game?
No, that was the net number, you're going to end up being around $8 number, $8 for gross standpoint.
But you're figuring it'd be $5 net?
Yeah, after cost of goods and labor and everything else.
And then we, we would negotiate, if we agreed to contract, we would negotiate what the percent of concessions we received was?
That's correct.
Well, do you have any experience in other similar venues about what percent of the concessions the less or realize?
It depends on, yes, I do have experience, because I actually have done it many times in the ballpark, or three times. It depends on, and I have to look at the renovations, you know, what space we're going to have to work with, you know, is that money we're going to do, is that, are there things that the school district has already contemplated in the renovations, you know, how much, how much cost that we would take on that actually would benefit TAF, you know, permanently, because it wouldn't just be a temporary thing that we'd bring in. But, you know, you start talking about what capital expenditures are we going to bring to the table, and so on and so forth, you know, but it's a percentage, and it's usually somewhere in that 20% range, you know, depending, if all things are equal, it's around 20%.
20% of the net concessions?
Yeah.
Is an example.
Yeah, and if, and if we, if we got to a deal, though, where you start talking about capital expenditures and, you know, long-term agreements, then that, that can end up changing.
Okay, thank you.
So, I, I just want to clarify, well, let me ask, Ruth, go ahead.
Take everyone who's done such a good job on the course, there was water out of my head and stuff.
Okay, so, you've got, on page 32, you've got a basic outline of your offering, and then on page 28, you've got subsequent pieces of that offering. So if, if we take the two pages together, we're talking about $2 a ticket, revenue share from food and beverage, and you're estimating a net at $5 per attendee, and then on 32, a minimum of 12 home games, 1,500 in rents, $2 per ticket, and that's, that's the, sort of an outline, and then we would agree in a contractual situation to have the percentages and other things defined.
Yes, and that is kind of what we're pursuing, what we are pursuing today, and similar to the way we've, we did our lease with the city, with the Cox and the Red Hawk Stadium, is outline our rough, what we believe is our rough proposal in terms of, and get down to the finer details after a letter of intent is signed, to, to put it all, everything under contract at that point.
Thank you very much, thanks for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
And now we have our next presenter. And that's Sold Out Strategies.
I'm honored and humbled to be standing here. I, number one, I love to sport a soccer. Number two, the very first paycheck I ever got in sports was when I was 13 years old, 1979, and worked for the Tulsa Roughnecks of the North American Soccer League, who you're getting ready to hear a lot about. And most importantly, it's how I met my wife, we were on the same coed team. So this is truly an honor and humbling to be here. I will go through a brief proposal and introduce some of our special guests. How do I do this? That's actually the last page. There you go. The first part is, what, who is Oklahoma City FC? Well, that is us. We currently own and operate two amateur teams, a men's team in the PDL, and a women's team in the WPSL. This is the highest level of amateur soccer in the country. Currently in attendance, we rank seventh out of 64 teams playing at this particular level. We're playing our home games at Oklahoma City University. The capacity is around 1,100 plus standing room only, and through three home games, we're averaging 1,200 fans a game. It is an electric atmosphere, and is busting at the seams, to say the least. On June 30th, we will be hosting and bringing in one of the most world, one of the world's most prominent soccer names in Club America, as their U-20 team from Mexico City comes into play, and that game will be played at Putnam City Stadium. Our ownership is Tim and Liz McLaughlin will serve as our majority owners, followed with Sean Jones, Donna Clark, myself, DeBrae Ayala, and Davis Hutterberg. Upon entering the NASL, that front office staff will increase by approximately 16 individuals, will add an additional 40 to 60 seasonal and game day related employees, and then when you add the players in, it's 100 new full or part-time jobs for people, and most of them from the Oklahoma City metro area. Our commitment to the soccer committee, community, it's an understatement to say that our ownership is tied to the soccer community. We have combined almost 100 years as administrators, coaches, sponsors, parents. We've worked the past two years with local governing bodies around town to even get to the level to be standing here at the podium. We have an in-house program that's called Just for Kicks, that provides tickets, camps, clinics, and enthusiasm for hundreds of underprivileged youth in the area. And then you'll see the, a lot of our marketing has been Hispanic. Actually, a little more than 50% of our cash outlay has been to the Hispanic community. For example, I brought with me our pocket schedules, on one side it's on English, and then you flip it over, and the other side is Spanish. And it's not a secret that this is the Hispanics' sport of choice, and we not only have marketed that way, but we have staffed that way as well. In your packet, you will see, I believe it's nine letters of endorsements from the soccer community, ranging from OU and OSU's athletic departments, to programs in Chickasha, Edmond, North Oklahoma City, and the Latino soccer community. Big League City, the NASL, this is our league of choice, this is not a minor league. TAF Stadium will be home to world-class soccer players, and TAF Stadium will host the world-famous New York Cosmos. For anyone that followed soccer in the 70s and 80s, the New York Cosmos are to soccer in America to what the New York Yankees are to baseball. And they will be in our league in annual Oklahoma City. We will be formally voted into the league on July 15th, 2013, and we will be the smallest market in the North American Soccer League. You can see the list of cities that are currently in the league. The commissioner from the NASL will speak in more in-depth about the league here in a few minutes. Our initial cash outlay to enter into the league is $3 million, and roughly, our operational budget on annual basis will range from 2.4 to 2.8 million dollars. The final slide is a financial summary of our lease, proposed lease agreement with the Oklahoma City Public Schools. We would like to enter into a two-year agreement plus renewal options. With our PDL, WPSL, and our NASL franchises, we project to host 22 to 30 home games, with a base rent of $4,500 a night, 15% of net concession revenue to Oklahoma City Public Schools. The stadium signage, the school would retain all permanent stadium signage, we would retain the revenues from game night signage only, mainly at a field level. And on the labor, it's, would be shared resources, we would pick up approximately 80% of those, called front-of-the-house costs, such as ushers, ticket takers, hospitality workers, to where we've asked the school board to assist with maintenance, a possible engineer on site to work with the video board. As far as giving back, we will earmark $2 per ticket to the Fields and Futures campaign, which will benefit directly Oklahoma City Public Schools. And we have fallen in love with the renderings of the new TAF Stadium, yet believe that it lacks a video board. And to my knowledge, right now, it's only a matrix scoreboard in the budget, so we would like to earmark $100,000 towards an immediate capital improvement to enhance the experience for the fans, not just for our games, but certainly that board we use for hundreds and hundreds of prep games. That concludes my portion of the presentation. I'd like to introduce now, he flew in from Florida this afternoon, he has over 25 years in the big, big leagues with NFL and Europe, spent the past seven years working with Major League Soccer, the Mexican Soccer Federation, and with David Beckham, Mr. Bill Peterson.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Thank you for your time. The NASL is comprised of 12 professional soccer teams at this time. We're planning to expand the league, looking at 2015 for those teams to start playing, and we plan to expand to Oklahoma City. Tonight, I just want to provide you with a brief overview of who and what our league is, and maybe even clarify some issues you've heard earlier this evening. So, how does this work? Okay. The NASL was the first major professional soccer league in America, it was the league of Pelé, the Cosmos, and many more legends during the 70s and 80s. The league was relaunched in 2009 with a mission to become a world-class professional soccer league that participates not only in the United States and in North America, but across the globe. Our vision is to grow the league to 18 teams by 2018, with all those teams being globally competitive, financially successful, and relevant to the sports key stakeholders. This is not a local sort of angle to the league, it's a global angle to the league, there's a global soccer economy, and our vision is to be part of that and bring that global game here to Oklahoma City. Brad mentioned some of the teams in our league, we're at 12 teams currently, you can see them up there, ranging from everywhere from Atlanta to Edmonton, Canada, Ottawa, Virginia, San Antonio, et cetera. Our ownership groups are very strong, long history, inner communities, they all have something in common, they're passionate about their communities, they're passionate about soccer, and they're passionate about our league. The group here in Oklahoma City fits well with this group, also very passionate about Oklahoma City. Brad touched on it, they've all been involved in the local soccer community and helped build that soccer community to a point where we feel a team will be very successful here, and they're all passionate about NASL. Some of our other owners. Current markets we're in, without going into too much detail due to the time, but we're in markets ranging from size of New York City to Indianapolis, has a variety of market sizes, and Oklahoma City fits well with that landscape. Teams in our league both face competition, not only in the NASL, but also US Open Cup, and also internationally against teams from around the world. We challenge all of our teams to go out and play the best teams in the world, because that's what the fans want. It's a global game now, throughout this country, with fans watching games throughout the world on television. What we want to do is have our teams playing those teams from around the world and competing against them, so that those fans can relate to the game at the highest level. And so, our teams are fortunate enough to be able to do that. All of our teams are locally owned and controlled, all of our teams are very involved in the community, all of our teams understand the power of owning a professional sports franchise, and what it means to developing not only soccer to market, but also helping out with different causes. Very proud of all the guys we have, or all the groups we have in our league, who are very active in their communities. Touch on the, on the legacy, you know, you just can't avoid it. Everyone who's ever followed soccer around the world is aware of what the Cosmos were, and what the NASL was able to accomplish. So we benefit from having that legacy, at the same time we all realize that we've got to continue that legacy and continue to grow the sport and our league. I think this is important, we provide a very affordable, fan-friendly environment to play soccer in. You find that our audiences are really representative of the melting pot that is America today. You'll see young professionals, you'll see families with young kids. We manage the game very closely, we manage the, the interaction and the experience in the stadiums very closely, and I know with this group, the local ownership group, that that's the kind of events you're going to have here in Oklahoma City. Affordable, family-friendly, exciting, great soccer on a weekly basis. This is what soccer really looks like in this country. There is Major League Soccer, which is first division, and this is, this isn't something I made up, this is from US Soccer. We're currently classified as a Division II league with the 12 clubs. The good news for us, there's no restrictions on, on how big we can grow, or what we can do as we're, as we're considered Division II. We do play teams in the other leagues from time to time, and Open Cup, but we're really focused more on the international aspect of bringing other teams and top competition, top players to, to all of our cities. The sport is the fastest-growing sport in the world, one of the largest sports in the world. Been able to witness that throughout my professional career, living in Europe for 10 years, working in Major League Soccer here in this country. It's amazing to see the growth of not only participation, but now people who want to support professional soccer. And we are currently the fastest-growing league in the world, with unbelievable and close to endless opportunities for upside and growth. I'll leave you with this slide. You can see the markets we're evaluating, we're looking at a lot of different cities throughout the country, we're selecting great cities to be part of our league, and we're bringing NASL here to Oklahoma City, because we believe in the city, we believe in the people, we believe in the ownership group, and we'd be honored to have a chance to, to showcase our game and our league in TAF Stadium. Thank you very much.
For a closing few comments, I'll bring up our majority owner, Mr. Tim McLaughlin.
Well, thank you, Brad, this evening. You know, I just looked at, Brad came to me with an opportunity, and said, I got an idea for you. Our family, Liz and I, is a great soccer, what we say, enthusiasts, we're in deep. Three kids play, we never end this, but we fall in love with the sport. And just the idea of what's going on with the city, the idea of bringing pro soccer to Oklahoma City, I think is just a very exciting opportunity, especially- to Oklahoma City, I think is just a very exciting opportunity, especially with the timing of what's going on with our city currently, with the renaissance that we're experiencing. You know, then I look at it and we kind of talk through it all and you think, "Okay, but pro soccer benefiting Oklahoma City schools? Wow." Now, that's a good deal. That's what really got me very excited about this opportunity to participate with Brad and the ownership structure of the company. Looking at something here that was really interesting, we looked at all the different leagues, and Bill put that hierarchy up there on the leagues. And I looked at it, I want the maximum benefit for what we're trying to get accomplished here in Oklahoma City schools. And as alluded to earlier in the prior presentation, that pro team is a wonderful league, it is AAA. This is a major league soccer league. The attendance is higher. If you envision a day, the New York Cosmos are playing in Taft Stadium and we've got Pele on the sidelines, we're going to bring in some fans at that point. We're going to sell some tickets, we're going to sell some concessions. And a lot of that's going to, of course, roll back and benefiting the Oklahoma City schools, which, as you know from my prior presentations, I'm very passionate about. I think the reason I joined the structure-based league with this particular group is they specialize in soccer. And in my business career, when you specialize in something, you're good at it. And they're also currently engaged in it and being very successful in it. Again, I look at this league as a big opportunity to fill a lot of folks in the stadium, sell a lot of concessions, and benefit the Oklahoma City schools and the city of Oklahoma City. So it's kind of my comments there.
Thank you. And I'll, Bob, any questions?
No comments.
Justin?
Has Pele retired?
Pele's retired. Justin, I didn't make this up. Today's USA Today, page three, is a story about this league and Pele. So he is alive. He's actually the honorary team president of the New York Cosmos. That was announced about a week ago.
All right, I know nothing about soccer. Okay, just a little bit, but not too much. What's the difference on your page? I don't know what page it's on, but what's the difference between clubs and teams?
Nothing. Soccer's always had terminology in Europe and South Africa that they're referred to as clubs. Like, we call them sports franchises here. And in Europe, they'll actually start at the eight-years-old all the way up to the pro sector. That's kind of what we're developing here. So we are the, you know, Oklahoma City FC. FC's football, it's not the football that we know in Big 12 country. And so we will eventually have a youth club below us. We'll all be one big family.
I did see that in your magazine, which I like, which I kind of stored for the kid, just for kicks, is what you're referring to?
Yes.
What are, you currently, you already have this team in operation, right?
Well, we have Oklahoma City FC, is an active LLC that owns two amateur teams. We would be adding the NASL franchise to that existing company.
Okay. So you're not, this attendance that you referred to of 1,200 and so on is not the same team that you're planning to go to Taft?
No.
Okay.
However, we would like for those teams to also play at Taft. That would get us to 22 to 30 home games versus just the 14 to 20 that would be at the pro level.
What is the average attendance at, and maybe this gentleman knows, what's the average attendance at San Antonio?
7,000 a game.
Is that a comparable market for us, you think?
Well, it has been for the NBA, and it's certainly only a few hundred thousand people more than in Oklahoma City. And actually, last year, they averaged 9,000 in a very similar venue to what Taft is, which is encouraging to us. And Justin, I've been sports all my life, you never know. You really can't compare a market size to how well or poor a team might do. You just never know.
Well, I did read that San Antonio's, what, 42% Hispanic race?
That sounds...
Is that comparable to Oklahoma City?
No, Oklahoma City's closer to 20, but growing.
Okay. And how long is this? I'm feeling that we're going to get into a power match between the two offers. And I think the power match is going to come down to who says that their league is, and this is just my opinion, whose league is better than the other league. It's kind of, because this group had left out your group, and your group saying you're better than, and I'm talking about leagues. So is this up to whatever a person thinks of where you rate the league of Division II?
It's my opinion, and everyone has opinion. You don't have to look at the markets to find out what's the better league. You don't have to look much further than how much you have to write a check for to get into the league.
And what is that?
It's $1,005,000 to the league, and then $1,005,000 in startup capital. So it's $3 million minimum before you even take the podium at a press conference.
Okay, what's the other one?
I don't feel comfortable answering that. I mean, that's, I'll let Bill.
Can you say this? I think our friends might agree. Look, we're supportive of everything USL does to play a role in soccer here in this country. I think the answer to your question is we're two different types of leagues. So as they stated, they're a AAA type of league that's focused on developing players for another league. We've established our own league that's focused on competition. So what we're selling our fans is not to dream that one of our players is going to go up to another league. That's going to happen. That's part of being part of the global soccer economy. But what we are promising our fans is both teams are going out there to win, and not going out there to develop players. So that's a little bit of the difference. I don't know if that makes one better or the other. It makes them different than the other.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Laura?
Yeah, so I have the same question to your group. Are, is this team coming to Oklahoma City, whether you do or not?
Absolutely.
Well, let's go over, I'm kind of reminded of that scene in The Blind Side where the little kid is wanting to know what's in it for me. So let's go over again what's in it for the district. $4,500 per event, correct?
Correct. Roughly 22 to 30 a night, 30 a year.
30 events per year estimate?
22 to 30.
22 to 30.
22 to 30. $4,500...
15% concessions. Is that 15% of the gross or 15% of the...
15% of the net.
Earmarking $2 per ticket. How much is a ticket? You said, I think you said 10 to 20.
10 to 30.
10 to 30. $2 per ticket would be earmarked to the Fields and Futures program that's already well underway.
Correct.
What other benefits for the district?
We would earmark $100,000 capital improvement to upgrade the proposed scoreboard at Taft Stadium. I also wanted to point out, we'd be very interested in playing a game at the new Capitol Hill Stadium. We believe that South Oklahoma City gets left out quite a bit. And I think not only would it benefit the city, but would benefit us long-term as well to even look at playing a game on that new facility.
$100,000 toward the upgraded scoreboard. How much more funding do you anticipate would be required to achieve the kind of scoreboard that you visualize?
It's endless, and there's a handful of companies out there that you could bid that out to. So I think Keith Signarch could probably answer that better than I could.
You don't have any idea?
I would guess anywhere from $100,000 to $300,000 on top of what you're already paying. That would be, you know, my guess. You almost open up a catalog and say, "I want this and I want that." We're all going to want the biggest and best, like you see at Owen Field in Norman. But, you know, budget comes into it. And I'm sure the naming rights and the pouring rights and the other big sponsors that you will obtain for the facility would certainly welcome a video board as well.
And do you see, I mean, I guess we have two competing potential lessees before us. Do you see it as a mutually exclusive thing?
Exclusive's a dangerous word, but I don't think Oklahoma City's ready for more than one team. I think it would confuse the marketplace. And if both played simultaneously, I think they'd both likely fail.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just clarification. I'm sorry, Ruth?
I just had one thing, and I was kind of looking over the finance part. And I was looking and noticed that under Waste Management, it says that Oklahoma City Public Schools would be responsible over that particular line item?
When we met with Keith, in general, we're responsible for the labor costs associated with the facility. However, you would like from the facility in to have a Director of Waste Management on-site, someone that knows the light system, an engineer per se, and then just generally an Assistant Athletic Director or a management on-site. And so, but in general, we would cover all of, you know, your real hard, hard dollars involved for staging an event night.
I do have concerns about that it's going to cost us to have someone there on-site for, you know, those particular games.
We're probably talking three or four people on a nightly basis. I mean, you could hand us the keys and we'll walk in. It normally doesn't work that way. You know, usually that's something, it's your property and your asset that you certainly want to have the ability to make sure that the fans are receiving the ultimate experience.
Okay, Jay, no questions. Okay. So just to clarify for me, the $100,000 would be, would actually put in the scoreboard? I mean, not that there couldn't be additions to it, but we would have the scoreboard?
It's come to our attention that what is in the budget currently is not a video board. It would be more of a matrix board that just shows logos. So it'd actually show the live action and replays. It would, an upgrade would be required. $100,000 is what we're prepared to commit to it. Whether that ends up being $80,000 or $200,000, I'm not sure. Mom may know, but I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. And I'm interested, I'm sorry that David Beckham has left. I would certainly like to see him come to Oklahoma City.
No, we're sorry, too.
And his autograph, actually. It says that the vast majority of marketing, now, I'm just assuming from what we're seeing here, that because this NASL is a pro league, that there, these are the televised kind of things that I can see today?
I would be very surprised if all games were not televised and/or on the radio. Well, they certainly are in San Antonio. And that's the model that we would follow.
So can we, if we're talking, these are the outlines of a contract, and when we got specific, could we, the district, participate in some of this, the television revenue?
Absolutely, Lynn. And, I mean, you're part of the family when that happens. And no different, if the Thunder televises a game, it's required by the networks to say Chesapeake Arena. And it will be the same here as far as avails. It depends on what network you're going with, if that's something easily that we can negotiate. Not only promotes the city, but the school district.
Okay. And you're looking at 4,500 an event as opposed to 1,500?
Correct.
Any other questions? Now, am I correct, Craig, that this is a, that they're, we're looking, this is an action item?
That is correct. The action item is to request the board to choose either prodigal or sold out.
Yeah, but we have to, we've got... So we have any comments?
I personally don't feel ready to vote tonight. I feel there's a lot of information that we need to think about and look at carefully and look at the different leagues. I have no personal knowledge of soccer, and I would like to understand better what it means for our district and what it means for our city. It's a really important decision.
May I just ask both parties, and I'm sorry I did it before. You're talking about a two-year agreement with renewables, and what kind of agreement are you talking about?
And are both contracts the same? Are we looking at both of them being two years?
That's what I'm just asking you.
We'd like a multiple year, just because we need some time to get, you know, like any, I think they'd agree to, you know, you'd like to have multiple years, whether it's two to three years. I mean, we'd be willing to look at that.
With options?
And I would suggest, here in the great presentation that they have, that you guys take some time to think about it.
So we aren't going to injure you or the other parties if we take, if we do this at the next, if we make a decision at the next board?
I can only speak for us. It wouldn't injure us because we've already got a franchise going.
Okay.
Laura, could you talk to the board about the Oklahoma law with multiple contracts and how that works?
Yes. We're going to, you're, normally, the law would provide that you cannot enter into a contract for the next fiscal year because you operate on a cash basis. You can only allocate revenue in the current fiscal year for that fiscal year. However, in this case, you're not allocating revenue. There would be no prohibition from entering into a multi-year contract where you are receiving revenue.
We like that.
That's a good concept, isn't it?
For members, I'd also add, if you, as you're looking at voting, whether that's tonight or the next board meeting, that you are, you are entering into, I believe somebody used the word "letter of intent," the contract terms still to be negotiated and brought back to the board for approval.
Yes.
I would just observe whichever of these parties we eventually become a contractual partner with, it will be subject to a negotiation of a mutually agreement, a mutually agreeable contract. I mean, there'll be a lot of details that these presentations have not covered. I'm just curious, is it the consensus of the board that we don't know enough to decide tonight? I mean, I'm prepared to go forward, but I don't want anyone to feel like they got rushed.
Phil, I think I concur with you. I think both parties made excellent presentations, very in-depth and thorough, provided us with all this disparate information. I think we should make a decision, rather than do what we sometimes do, let's put things off and put things off. Let's make a decision.
Well, Wes, having said that, I would move that we take the higher of the two offers. What are you considering to hire at two offers? Wasn't there a $4,500 event as opposed to $1,500 event? Or even...
Yeah, I see that, but, I mean, what I'm kind of toying with, Jay, is that the, I kind of think that whichever way you lean towards with the right marketing, you're going to get the right, the same attendance. So on Mr. Lund's, the 1,300, which obviously is not the, excuse me, 1,233 average attendance is not the, correct if I'm wrong, the correct, the team that's coming. So we're taking a guess of what that is, but the attendance hopefully is the same. So you're saying go back to the actual $4,500 compared to $1,500?
Well, soccer in Oklahoma City is, especially on the south side of Oklahoma City, we have more attendance at soccer games than we do our football games for south-side schools. So, but my thought here is what, you really don't know what you're going to put in that stadium in the first couple of years. I would suspect that down the road, they're going to be full. But that's just an opinion. And I know you probably put more on the south side than you would on the north side. That's just another opinion. So I just think that if you're going to get 4,500 as opposed to 1,500, it's, and you're, and I know that this probably doesn't bode well with the folks that are here, but I don't like to see too far out in terms of contracts because then if we get good, solid numbers of what comes in, we might want something different, something better.
Okay.
My only problem with either one of these is, and I've stated, and I would like to state public for the record, is that, well, I think we already have the practice of selling alcohol at... alcohol at, in some of our facilities, I think Northwest Class. I have a problem with selling alcohol at a, on a public school place where we play football, and then we capitalize on that. That's just, it's not prohibited for me, but I don't, I have a problem with that. And there isn't a proposal that in concession there would be alcohol being served. Is that accurate?
I think that's to be negotiated.
Yeah, so, but.
I would imagine that both parties would want alcohol outside nights, and that's a huge revenue source.
Well, I'm sure it is, but that's, it's still, you know, it is still school property where kids play football on Thursdays and Friday nights, and, and that's just, that's just a kind of personal, it's not something, as I said, it would be prohibited. But that is a concern of mine. The other concern is that we get the most amount, or, you know, we get the most amount of revenue possible. Now, the, the folks that are offering 4,500, they're also putting money into the, to the foundation, and that's correct. So, that's important too, because we have field of dreams that have just really helped and are going to continue to help. So, that's, that's a big issue for me as well. So, you know, if, if no one would like that, to hear the motion, I would withdraw it, but I would just make a motion that if we move on that.
I feel there is the way the law has, has expressed, you know, that looking at the, well, listening to the presentations and looking at what we have before us, that it's different enough to where that, you know, I, I would like to make sure that we're kind of comparing that even the contractors, apples to apples, and, you know, just like I heard one presentation mention about the alcohol where the others didn't, where that one is mentioning about, like I said, what's going to cost the district, and that's the waste management and other parts, and the other didn't, you know. So, in that type of a situation, you know, to weigh out exactly, and I know what you're saying, Phil, as far as that this is just, you know, to vote on a contract, but then the negotiations will come later, but. Well, we have a motion on the floor from Jay to accept the.
Oklahoma City.
Oklahoma City, I'm sorry, the sold-out, sold-out strategies proposal. And so, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I second it.
And now, is there some discussion?
I would like to discuss.
Okay, please.
I intend to vote in support of Jay's motion. It looks to me like they're talking about a stronger league. It looks like more revenue. We understand it's all projected, but, and, and then finally, to me, the persuasive, or one of the most persuasive items is, we're looking at contracting with a partner. And I compliment both these parties on their presentation and their professionalism, and I at least am aware a little bit of both of them. But the Oklahoma City FC proposal is from someone who is already our partner. They are going across this district, and that is to say that the McLaughlin Family Foundation with the Welker Family Foundation, and, and the active person in the McLaughlin Foundation that has been making improvements to our athletic fields is Tim McLaughlin, who is the majority owner of Oklahoma City FC, according to this presentation. So, I mean, that's persuasive to me. They're already a partner in a sense, and we know their commitment to Oklahoma City Public Schools. We've seen it, and thousands, if not millions of dollars have been pledged toward the improvement of our athletic fields. And they haven't asked for any money from the district to make these improvements. So, for all the unfortunate reasons, they have my support.
So.
Madam Chair, I can also state for the record to repeat what the vice chairman stated, that the motion to accept proposal from Sold Out Strategies to lease staff Tab Stadium is subject to the negotiation and approval of a written contract with Sold Out Strategies.
That's correct. Any other discussion? We'll call for the vote.
Hi, sir.
Having received six I votes and one nay vote, motion carries as made.
Thank you. Thank you all for your presentations. We are now at 7.02, the proposed new policy, Jay 67, the district wellness policy for the third reading.
I think if we can table the issue of chocolate milk, we probably have ourselves a deal.
There's no chocolate milk in this.
Yeah. This has been something we've been working on for about almost two years now.
Is there a present motion?
No.
No, okay. So, are we at, as an action item?
We're an action item.
Okay. So, do we have a motion?
I would like to move to approve the new wellness policy, item number 72.
Good. Motion by Laura, Craig, and second by Ruth.
Discussion?
Yes.
I've read the, the wellness, and for the most part, it's okay, but there are some provisions in there that, you know, and how we, we do the physical education part of it, but we need to make sure administration is following because, you know, you can, you can starve our children, cutting out half a third or two-thirds of the calories a day, but until we get our physical education programs where there's not 100 kids in there, and we're actually doing a physical education program that's, that works, it's just half of the equation.
Thank you. Any other comments? Call for the vote.
Having received seven I votes, zero nay votes, motion carries as made.
And now, we have the proposed 7.03, the deletion of the old policy, Jay 67, Child Nutrition and Physical Fitness Program. There are motion to delete the old policy?
Submit.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Having received seven I votes, zero nay votes, motion carries as made.
Then 7.04 is for information only. It's the new regulation, Jay 67R1, on district wellness. And information only, 7.05, the proposed deletion of the old regulation, Jay 67R1, Child Nutrition Program. So, update on maps, there's none scheduled, and we have an approval of the consent agenda, and I would like to, is, does anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda? I would like to pull item 11.09 just for discussion. We can certainly go ahead and vote. I just want some discussion on that. It's the changing of the boundaries. Is there anything else?
I'd like to pull the 11.01 for discussion.
I'm sorry?
11.01.
11.01, okay. So, do we have a motion with those two items for discussion?
So moved.
And you like it by Ruth?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, if you could discuss those items first.
Okay.
And then, after the discussion, the motions for the consent agenda.
Okay. So, Justin, we'll start with 11.01.
I guess this is a, we had a gentleman come, two gentlemen come in and speak this evening about the drainage for the Rebel Isle. Is this exactly what we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Will this?
That was a really good question, but, but does, does the question and answer mean that 11.01, if we approve it, it will solve the problem of the two gentlemen who spoke to us?
Thank you, Jim. Please.
The money set up is to address a drainage problem at, at Belle Isle. Is it going to be an absolute guarantee that when we have a 500-year rainfall, it seems like we're having every other year, could it, could it cause a problem? That we don't know, but it's not right the way it is, and we're going to pay the money to make it right as far as the engineers are concerned. Now, whether, to answer your, Mr. Morning, your question, I can't guarantee anything on that.
But the intent?
The intent and the amount of money that's put into it is to address that issue.
This is a situation where we've actually got the answer before we had big complaints on it, and we, we wanted to, in good faith.
Well, it's, it's also with this last storm event, we had water coming indoors that have never, in some of our sites, that have never experienced any flood.
Thank you. Justin, anything else?
Thank you very much.
I move the approval of 11.01 then.
It was just for discussion?
It was just for discussion.
Well, why not? Why don't we take care of it?
We're going to take care of all of them together.
But we might vote differently one over the other. We can't take, you've got to vote for them separately.
They pulled for a separate vote, just for discussion.
They were pulled for, the two items were pulled for discussion only?
Yeah.
And it didn't take them a long way home, but I'm, I'm with you.
Okay. 11.09 is the change in attendance boundaries, and this is just for discussion on the John Rex Charter Elementary School. And Phil, I know you've got some information on that.
Well, yes. As you know, the downtown elementary school that's slated to open its doors August 1 of 2014 is being, is a charter school being governed by a 50-50 partnership between our district and a nonprofit called Oklahoma City Quality Schools, Inc. And on October 3 of 2011, we entered into a memorandum of understanding with that nonprofit group, and then it came time, and that negotiation took 18 months, and it was two groups that you might say were traditionally wary of one another. But we've come together, the projects going forward, they, they've broken ground, although the fundamental groundbreaking hasn't occurred yet, but the construction company is in there working as we speak. And we, one of the things our district was insistent upon was that we use the Western Village model, what we call the Western Village model, which means there would be an attendance boundary for this charter school, and any child living within the boundary was in. That's all they had to do was live there, and they would be automatically admitted. It would be their neighborhood school. And then, we negotiated the admissions beyond those in the attendance boundary. And the, the order of admission would be, secondly, after the neighborhood kids, would be a child who was attending another school, but it was under federal statutes failing, and by federal law, he's entitled to transfer. And so, of course, you must let those children in. Historically, I think we've managed to have, I don't know, 15 or 18 or 20 such transfers annually, all across the district, not just the one school, but all across the district. So, that's a de minimis number. The third priority for admission to the downtown school was any child residing in the Oklahoma City School District. And then, the fourth category for admission was any child who resided outside the district but whose parent or guardian was employed within the attendance boundaries. And finally, the fifth category of admission would be anybody else. So, then the next thing that these two equal partners had to get together on was the attendance boundary. And the attendance boundary was set for the River on the South, 10th Street on the North, Western on the West, Lottie on the East. And then, very, very recently, a group came to the Rex Board and said, "We would like to persuade you to change your boundary to include the Midtown Business District." And the group that asked us to do it was the.
The Midtown Redevelopment Board.
The Midtown Redevelopment Board. And they, their presentation, the essence of it was that the attendance boundary that had been established sliced right through the middle of their, what?
Downtown district or?
Yeah, the Midtown District. So, they asked us to change the district, I mean, the attendance boundary by advancing it up to 13th Street over on the western side, I think back down to 10th and across, and then on the northeast corner of that attendance boundary, bring it up to 13th again. And that seemed to catch their Midtown Business District. So, it was presented to the Rex Board, and it was approved, and that's half the partners. And now, it's being presented to us for approval. I recommend it to you, that everything's going very smoothly with regard to downtown school. I see no reason, no downside. It will increase the number of children in the neighborhood, the attendance boundary, that are entitled to go to the downtown school by virtue of where they live. So, looks like okay to me. I hope you agree.
Thank you. Okay, so, yes.
Okay, I have my voice.
Sure.
So, are you recognizing that? Yes. Okay. Now, I want to make sure that I understand, we were talking, you mentioned about, now, I want to make sure we talked about failing students or failing schools. You said that if the school, is it the school failing or a student that's failing that have that opportunity to, we're talking about district school, right? Are we talking about district school?
She's asking, is it the school that's failing that they can then request, or if the student is failing in that school?
If the school. Okay, if the school is failing. One of the, one of our district schools that's failing, that the children from that particular school, whichever one that might be, would be accepted into the school.
And they'd be in the second order?
Yes, it doesn't say under the second order, so I want to make sure it doesn't say that I'm an orphan, failing student or failing school. Okay. And then, I think it's got that. And then, I was, and I've mentioned about that, the concern as far as the part, the new, the new boundaries that's projected or that's being requested, and it had the cutout of that particular area right there on 13th between, I believe it's Walnut and Lincoln. And so, you know, I was, I was advised that that, that particular complex, which is, my understanding, a low-income type of a complex, but they would attend the Wilson Elementary School, right? And that school is doing well and thriving, so, you know, that's, that's okay. And so, that, you know, so, yes, with that being the case, and from what we've discussed here, yes, I would be on board for that.
Okay. So, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll call for the vote.
Having received seven I votes, zero nay votes, motion carries as made.
Thank you. Any new business? Then, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second? Second?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Thank you.
Ms. Fields? Having received seven "I" votes, zero "they" votes, motion carries as made.